I was discussing the logistics with Dr. Day. Good afternoon. Is there approval for electronic participation by a school board member?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Second.
Dr. Day, Mr. Connor, would you please call the role?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries at zero.
Paul, you're officially in. Pledge of allegiance, Dr. Day. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Day. Mr. DePaul, could you put yourself on mute, please? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Mrs. Lowry, Mr. Andrews, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries at zero.
Thank you. Next one is Chair comment, and I wanted to say something which I'm not comfortable saying it, but I gotta say, something happened in the last board meeting which is not, in my mind, should have happened, would have, will happen in future, but is there any way in this board? I was not, parliamentary rules allow the motion to be reconsidered from the prevailing side. And me and Mr. Andrews were not there, so we were nonexistent from the prevailing side. Mrs. Lowry voted against it, so she was not on the prevailing side.
No, I think...
No, Mrs. Preston, yeah.
Mrs. Preston voted against the motion, so she's not on the prevailing side. And I'm humbly requesting, is there a, from the prevailing side, is there a desire to bring that motion back for reconsideration?
I, yes, I have reasons for a desire.
It has to be from...
Motion.
She's on the prevailing side.
No, she voted no.
No, only Miss Preston voted no.
Only Miss Preston, so only Miss Preston you?
No, no, no.
No, prevailing side, ones who voted for it.
Yes.
The winning side can't reconsider, okay.
Second. Mrs. Lowry brings the motion. Mr. Connor seconded, so we are reconsidering the motion as presented by Dr. Day last time to ban Mr. McCain from speaking to the school board, right? Now it's open for discussion. Mr. Dr. Day first.
So I have some comments I'd like to read. Mr. McCain has been a champion of concern for the achievement gap of LCS students for many years. I personally have attended more than one meeting of the Concerned Citizens Group that Mr. McCain leads, and we encouraged him to attend meetings of our Academic Success Committee this year. He gave an invited presentation to that committee at its October 8th meeting, and you can see the slides from his presentation if you go to the agenda for that meeting on Board Docs. There were no other issues on the agenda that day, so that he could have as much time, much of the meeting's time, as he needed. Continued conversation with him was also part of the committee's agenda on November 7 and December 3. He continued to attend the meetings of the Academic Success Committee through February 25, but I believe he has not attended the last couple meetings of that committee, at one of which we briefly followed up on one of his suggestions. We also included him on the search committee, which helped us identify our new superintendent. I point things out to make it clear that the school board is not adverse to Mr. McCain's concerns at all. Rather, we share them and we welcome his input. When we began the public comment section of the June 3 agenda, I viewed Mr. McCain as a friendly collaborator with the board, and for that reason dispensed with the usual reading of the board's policies regarding public comment, thinking that he would be the last person to disrespect them. And perhaps that was my mistake. If I had read the policy, he would have been reminded of the time limit for speakers and the prohibition against board members responding to questions or requests from commenters. Unfortunately, Mr. McCain did not respect those policies and was defiant in response to repeated requests for him to honor the time limit our policies impose, even stating that he would refuse to sit down, and we had taken some action on his concern. I've rewatched that, the video from that meeting, and by my count, he was asked to sit, to stop and sit down eight times. As the presiding officer of that meeting, I felt that his open defiance of our policy would set a bad precedent if unaddressed, and so suggested the ban on future public comments for him in response, which was supported by the board's vote. This is very unfortunate, because it focuses attention on the confrontation rather than finding solutions to our shared concerns. So regarding the future, I expect, and I think the process has already begun, that the board would be willing to rescind its prohibition of future public comments from Mr. McCain, but for my part, I would like to have some assurance that he will respect our policies in the future before I vote in favor of the motion.
Let's go to Mr. Connor, I'll come back to you.
I just wanted to say that we, it was an unfortunate situation, but we really have to be careful, and I know, because I was sitting here saying we needed to read the rules and regulations, and I'm praying that in the future, every single time, we have to do it every time for the one time. That way, there's no, because maybe because we didn't bring it out, he would not be reminded that there is a time limit and that we are not able to respond directly to the speakers. And him demanding a meeting put us in a position, like if we respond, then we're violating our own rules of order. So, and I like, if we rescind, which I am in favor of, we also, I also want the message to go out that, so it doesn't thought, well, if I just want to disrupt the meeting, I can just come and disrupt, and eventually I'll have my way. We have to be able to follow our rules. If we're lawless, then there's no control. So I hate that it happened, I hate that we, that I had to participate in it, but in the, you know, I will vote, if the vote comes around, to rescind, but I also want to make sure that we understand that in the future, we're gonna ask that public comments stick to, and some of that's written in state law. If you go and look at our, it has, it references different codes in state law about public meetings. I thank Mr. Tinsley, because you gave me some information in response to a couple emails that, where you broke down the actual state statutes on the conduction of a public meeting and what is considered a Class 1 misdemeanor to disrupt said meetings. And I want to make sure that in the future, when someone knows that they go past the time and then defiantly refuses to leave the podium, that there will be some consequences to that action.
Mrs. Lowry?
And, and based on what Mr. Connor said about the emails that we received, I felt to an extent, a little bit betrayal, because Mr. Connor, I mean, not Mr. Connor, Mr. McCann left out the fact that he, he should have said at the podium, he was in our meetings, that he did attend, that he did hear information from the administration about what they're doing to help the kids. We did, I did mention in a meeting that we looked at his program he mentioned from another state, and that financially, that's out of our bucket range, we could not do that. But I feel like these letters that we got, this, there was pertinent information that was missing. And after he had, if he had stayed and listened, Dr. Davis came up and she presented everything that they were gonna, we were planning on doing for children, for the future that are struggling, and I asked her out loud, for the community's sake, I said, you know, what's your timeline on this for us to look for? So I'm all for our kids doing better, too. I know it's gotta be realistic, I know it's been long in waiting, you know, I've only been on the board two years, but, you know, we're doing what, the tools we have given, the best that we can. So I was surprised, because Mr. McCann has always been upstanding in all our meetings with us, so that just surprised me a little bit. But I'm definitely willing to rescind if he realizes he's gotta follow our policies.
Going to see if Mr. DePaul is still there, because I cannot see with my back. Any other?
I'm here.
I guess, I just wanted to make sure if you have, you have an opportunity to speak, because I cannot see you in the back. Just chime in if you feel like, oh, thank you.
I, I would. I'd only be echoing what's already said. I find Mr. McCain to be a valuable resource for this board, and I agree with just about everything he was making mention about that evening. I would like assurance from him that it doesn't, you know, whether it be an apology or just an assurance that it won't happen again. I am very much in favor of having Mr. McCain's input be a part of what we do, because he's very helpful, very, very smart, and very passionate. So I'm, I'm just echoing what has already been said.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yeah, again, echoing much of what everyone has said, but I'm, I'm a huge Danny McCann fan, I think he's done great stuff, continues to do great things for this community, this city. I, too, was surprised at how things unfolded at the last meeting, was unfortunate. But I do, again, echo the, the requirement, the request, I should say, for acknowledgement, and I would just elaborate on what Mr. Connor was saying. There is an Virginia code, it's 18.2-415, that disallows any kind of disruption of a public meeting of the sort of a school board. And that is punishable, is a Class 1 misdemeanor in Virginia. So what happened that night was, Mr. McCann did break the law by not sitting down and following the policies of the board. I believe that needs to be acknowledged, and, and we need to make sure that the public understands that that is not acceptable. It is not acceptable, and so when the acting board chair said, do I need to call the police? He was acting within the law of the Commonwealth of Virginia, so. But again, I do support Mr. McCann fully, wholeheartedly. He was a wonderful addition to the search committee, his voice was heard, and he was a big part of choosing our next superintendent, or our new superintendent.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that you invite Mr. McCain to the podium and ask if he has any comments he would might make to the board.
Could we do that as part of our process?
I believe so, yeah.
Mr. McCain, would you be willing to come to the podium? If you would like to, you don't have to.
You're free to say whatever you want to say, sir.
Well, you know, I'm sorry that I stayed over the five minutes, but after all, there are questions and things that we need to address, and there's no way we can do that if we stand here and make comments and ask questions or whatever, and there's no response. I take a meeting to be a place you listen, ask questions, and receive answers. We've been talking about our children, students and children forever. Nothing has changed. So still, yes, I'm willing to, five minutes or whatever, but we have to sit down somewhere, at a time and a place, so that we can further discuss what's going on with our students and our children. And I will sit down, but something definitely needs to happen.
Thank you, sir.
Because it's year after year, let me just say this while I'm sitting, I'm sitting. And those numbers I gave, they are your numbers, all that data, and no one on the board has really addressed those. They need to be addressed, and I'm willing to even stand up with some of you, because we need to bring the community together, that's the only way we're gonna do and make changes in our system.
We'll make it happen, thank you. Appreciate you coming up.
Yes, thank you.
So how should I proceed with the dissent? Because the original motion was to ban him, so we take that motion down first?
The motion is to rescind that motion that passed on June 3.
Okay. So any further discussion?
So voting yes means we're on doing that motion that we made before.
Is any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Now, since I voted...
Yes, you can still vote.
Do I, do I vote now or not? Okay, I wasn't sure if I could be included in this vote, then yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and Mr. McCain, you're welcome to come to every public comment from here on. Thank you, sir. Thank you for everything you do for Lynchburg City Schools and our kids. The next one is work session consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Mrs. Lowry?
Second.
Dr. Day, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role? Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr., Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is physical education instruction assessment improvement, Mrs. Pew.
Absolutely. I'm gonna let Dr. Wodika offer his information to the board. I know he's been waiting a long time for this opportunity, and it's good news, and so I am gonna hand it over to Dr. Wodika to share the information about physical education instruction and assessment.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Pew, and members of the board. It's so good to see everyone here on our last night together as a group. So I'm really thrilled to provide to you the results of the Wellness Related Fitness Survey. This is our end of year results for the school division. This is related to our PE, our physical education programs in the division. So you might be wondering, why is the operations guide presenting on achievement data for our students? But you might not know is, over the last couple of years, I've had the really, really great opportunity to work with our arts teachers and our physical education and health teachers, providing some instructional supervision, working on the programs and working with that group, hopefully to make things even better than what they already are. And so I'm really thrilled to have had the opportunity to do that. It's been a really, really great experience for me. I will greatly miss them when we're not together, but I wanted to make sure to be here tonight to celebrate the really incredible success that they've had over the last year or so, particularly the physical education components. Also had lots of successes on the arts side, but just didn't have a presentation on that. So this helps us understand a couple of things. The Wellness Related Fitness Survey, this is the, essentially the SOL for physical education, right? So it's not like we're reporting this in the same way that we are other SOL data, but it's really important that we take a look at what we have going on in terms of our physical fitness of our students, as well as the, the quality of instruction or the impact of our instruction is going on. So we took a look at our end of year data at the, at last year. So the Wellness Related Fitness Survey has five major components, an abdominal assessment, the aerobic assessment, the upper body strength assessment, flexibility assessment, and then the trunk lift assessment. Trunk lift is essentially a, an assessment of lower back flexibility. That's a very specific thing that they do. We also break this up by age group. We, we take a look at it by both gender and by grade. Just for simplicity here, we provided this just at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And what I'm showing you here is some pretty troubling data from last year. The negative numbers that you see are Lynchburg City Schools' pass rates as compared to the statewide average pass rate. So if you take a look at, for instance, upper body strength in elementary school, the average pass rate for a school is about 70%. Well, we were 18% lower than that. So in every area at the, at the end of last year, we were lower than the statewide average, and in some cases, quite considerably. So as you can imagine, that was a very troubling statistic for us to take a look at. We wanted to make sure that we are looking at what's going on, what was going on in instruction related to physical education, why these things are going on, and what it is that we can do to make instruction even better, so that our students have the opportunity to grow and develop enough physically in the way that we need them to do so. So one thing I'll say is that, you know, we'll often hear folks will say, well, you know, hey, they're middle school students, they may or not, may not want to engage in physical activity, that sort of thing, right? But I, what I would say is that our, our middle school students are not substantively different than any other middle school student in the state, and so they should be at least, hopefully, performing at the same level that any other middle school will be doing. And hopefully, as a school division that is focused on excellence, hopefully, we are performing at an even better rate. And so that's our goal in all of this. So we took a look at that data, obviously, as I said, we were very troubled by that, and we took, tried to understand what was going on. Couple of findings here that I just want to go over, that's really important, and you may have heard about some of these things. The first is that for a number of years post-COVID, students were not required to dress out for secondary physical education, right? So all of us went through PE class, we all dressed out, you know, whether we liked it or not, right? It's part of, it's part of a thing that we do, and we found that that greatly reduced the engagement of our students. So if you're dressed like this, when you go to PE class, you're probably not going to engage in the same way. So we started this year saying all students are required to dress out. There's obviously a number of issues with different, different needs and that sort of thing. We, we met them individually as well. We also found that to some extent, assessments were not standard across the division, so everyone was sort of doing an abdominal test or an aerobic test. They might be just sort of slightly different from one another, and so we wanted to make sure that was consistent across the different, across the division. We also found in many cases that physical education or movement education, that we call it in the elementary school, oftentimes was not aligned necessarily to the standards or that fitness assessment, right? So we, we might be playing, you know, a game, but it may not be aligned to what our standards actually are for instruction in physical education, and as a result, not connected to the assessment. So we wanted to make sure those are all aligned. In some cases, I mean, I've been saying it probably to everyone, we found that there was, in, in, in a few cases, there was very minimal instruction going on in a few PE classes. We made some adjustments in terms of those, those realities, as well as in some cases, some changes of personnel to make sure that instruction was happening in a, in a way that was good fidelity. Probably the most troubling part here, and the easiest thing to fix, has been that many teachers, even though they've maybe been here a long time, just simply didn't know each other, right? So if you think about the elementary schools, oftentimes, if, if a teacher oftentimes is in one school with no other PE teachers, or they might be in a couple of schools, but they're, they're not interacting on a daily basis with other physical education teachers at the elementary level. Not the secondary level, they have a department and that sort of thing, but for many years, many teachers just did not have those relationships as we went along. So we wanted to make sure we fixed that as well, so they could develop that professional community of educators. So here's what we did. In August of last year, we, we'd started out with our professional learning days. The teachers got together, they developed a common assessment guide. How are we going to do the assessment? They also developed an assessment schedule. They said, at the beginning of the year, we're gonna do what we call pre-assessment, or sort of beginning of the year assessment. We'll do a mid-year or formative assessment, and then we'll do it end of the year. That's what we end up reporting to the state. Having a common schedule for the whole division, everybody kind of knows what's going on. And then we also developed a common warm-up routine with exercise banks. So as students go to physical education on a day-to-day basis, or week-to-week, depending on what level you're at, you might have a common warm-up so that you are making improvements in your physical fitness in an intentional way, as well as making, making a bank for our folks to find exercises that would help us move forward. So that was a really great opportunity for teachers to work together. There was also, in, in October, we took a look at the beginning of the year data, or pre-assessment data, to say, how are students doing in terms of their performance on our physical fitness assessments? We found what we did, and then they developed a, or completed what we call backwards design exercise to help evaluate where that data is and how we might change instruction moving forward. And backwards design is essentially saying, hey, where do we want our students to be? And how do we engage in instruction to get those students where they? It's, it's pretty simple there. And then our last professional, professional learning time, they actually spent some time planning professional learning for the coming school year. I kind of felt that I, you know, if I was going to be here, I was sort of at the limit of the, the extent that I could, could lead professional development for physical education teachers. And so what they're going to do next year, what the plan is that they will do, is that they have identified professional learning that they will teach to one another throughout the year. So maybe this teacher is really good at teaching dance as a component of work, and we might use that as, as we go forward. So I, the really big win here is that we have teachers that are coming together as professional educators, finding ways to improve instruction, understanding the performance of our, of our students. This is not a new program, we didn't spend any money to do any of this work. We just really relied on our teachers to come together to figure out how can we improve instruction as the professionals that they are, and they've done a wonderful, wonderful job of doing that, and, and really, really proud of that. Next couple slides I'll just share with you, this is that assessment cycle. In, long story short, we do an assessment at the beginning, mid, middle of the year, and at the end of the year, the different levels of schools. Just because the schedule operates differently, might be a little bit different. But that's, that's sort of how that assessment is going. So we can, can annually reflect on, or actually, three times a year, reflect on where that student is going. I just want to share a couple of pictures that I'm really proud of, because I think it's really fun to, to think about, and I think pictures are worth a thousand words, as, as we all say. This is the, the backwards design exercise that we did. This is at, obviously, D.C. Glass, this is all the PE teachers in the division. And what you see here is, if you look at the sort of lower right-hand corner, brand-new teachers working directly with more experienced teachers. You see departments of teachers at a school taking a look at that beginning of the year data and saying, okay, what is this information telling us? And how can we make instruction better by understanding what that data looks like? And how do we make that improvement? So this was a really wonderful day, it was only a couple hours long, but they spent a lot of time working together, having serious conversations about... having serious conversations about the physical fitness of our students. How do we make instruction better? So they have a great experience and they enjoy physical uh physical fitness. And so they in that, I don't expect you to read that, uh but it's just an example of uh the kinds of questions they were answering. And this is actually a a real response from from one school that was working together. Um, thinking about instructional planning, we're saying a- after we do that first initial um assessment of in the fall, that data collection, we're saying, what can our students do now already, right? Uh, and what impact does that have on our teaching? What can they not do at this point? What impact is that going to have um on our students? What are the interests that our students have that we can draw them into instruction on a daily basis so that they're excited about being in PE class, right? They're excited about exercising um to the best extent we can. What are those learning preferences? And then really important, and that's really kind of the the chart that you see here, is how can we differentiate instruction so that we know that we are meeting students' individual needs based on their interests, based on their readiness levels now, based on their learning preferences, and and do so in a way that takes a coup- look at a couple of things. First of all, we wanna look at students who may be not quite performing where we want them to be because, number one, maybe they have a physical fitness issue, right? Maybe they're not quite there yet physically. We also might, uh as you can imagine, might have some students who may not be engaging, uh just may not be interested in doing physical fitness, right? They may be physically fit as it is right now, but they just maybe just PE class wasn't exciting for them. What kind of things can we do to make instruction better for them? And then also very important to to differentiation is thinking about students who uh are already more advanced than our instruction level was planned for, right? So students who are really, in this case, in good physical fitness shape, maybe they do athletics uh on the side or whatever the case may be. And how do we make this experience wonderful for them so that uh PE class can be valued for their experiences? And so you can see here, there's lots of questions uh teachers were asking themselves, how do they answer, and how do how are they thinking about their addressing instruction um as well? Um, just a couple more pictures uh here. Uh, this is a a picture, obviously, at Dunbar Middle School. What you see here um is uh some some direct instruction where if you'll see the teacher on the left side is working specifically with a student that's going through a drill. You also see a stu- a group of students who are not currently exercising, but they're engaged in what's going on in the lesson. Uh, even the person that's sitting on the 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 bleachers, you know, she's not sleeping, right? Uh, she's engaged in what's going on. So that's a really positive thing. And then you have a student on the right that's working independently. Um, that's really positive, right? So there's there's clear engagement uh when there's clearly this lesson or instruction that's that's going on. The next slide there, this is a a whole group. This is one of those warm-up exercises. Um, again, this is at uh at E C Glass where the whole group of students is doing their warm-up exercise together. Uh, they're they're doing, uh I think they're running back and forth pretty much uh at this point, getting ready for their aerobic uh assessment going on. Again, you see everyone in that picture engaged in instruction. They are doing the work. They are exercising in the middle of the school day in a PE class. They're not laying on the bleachers. They're not, you know, talking on the phone, right? Uh, they're not doing whatever they're supposed, not supposed to be doing. They are engaged in instruction. That's a really positive thing. Uh, and the last thing is, this is one of my favorite pictures that I I I I clipped uh as I was driving by T C Miller one day. Uh, um, Roswell Brown is the is a was a first-year teacher at T C Miller this year. He's staying with us. He's gonna go to Dunbar next year and be a great middle school uh PE teacher there. You see this really great whole-group instruction uh where we're learning to play kickball as a team. You see every single student that's involved uh is engaged in instruction. They're actively doing the work uh and 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 being a part of it. So I was really proud of those pictures, and that was reflective, I think, of the kind of instruction that we were seeing throughout the year. So what do those results look like? Um, we saw lots more students who were actively engaged in physical education. Uh, we saw far fewer behavioral challenges during PE class than we did in previous years. That's fantastic. Uh, not there weren't any, right, but there were were less than what there were before. We have seen improved student physical fitness. I'll show you the data, what that looks like in a few minutes. And I think my what I really, really appreciate about this is that we've seen really improved teacher engagement and professionalism, and people are excited about their job. There's always been wonderful PE teachers in Lynchburg City Schools. We're continuing to grow that. Um, we're excited about that. And I think this is an opportunity for another example of excellence in LCS. We should be good at physical education because we do it. It should be something we're strong at. It shouldn't be something that we're looking like we are well well behind, right? So you're saying that's all great, right? Uh, sounds sounds good. What does the actual data look like? And before I get to that, I wanna remind you of the data that we had at the end of last year. So if we go to the next slide. So you remember this, right? Lots of red, lots of negative numbers. Well, what does the next slide look like for this year? Lots of positive numbers, lots of areas where we are either meeting the uh meeting the statewide average, or we're ahead of the statewide average, right? Um, and and that's really positive. Twelve out of the fifteen areas, we are either, again, meeting or above there. And fourteen out of the fifteen areas, if you go to the next slide, we have made um on the next slide, we've made substantial substantial gains
Wow.
uh in our physical fitness, and the results our students are showing because of the really, really high-quality instruction that's going on uh as a result of the the teachers that are working together and doing really great work. So really, really, really proud of all the work the teachers are doing uh to make this happen for our students. Um, these are dramatic changes in numbers. These are dramatic changes in our performance, and I'm really, really proud of that um as we go forward again. So last slide here, um just a couple of things uh for it's coming up for next year, it's planned for next year. Uh, as I mentioned before, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six professional learning days, uh they're designed by teachers uh for one another to say, hey, here, I have a strength in this area, then I'll lead professional development for this area. Um, and so I'm excited to hopefully that that goes well, and and they will be excited about continuing forward with that. Uh, we have developed a standard curriculum for family life at the middle school level. The same thing needs to happen for uh elementary and high school. That's ongoing right now. Um, we'll be working, uh there will be work with the school health advisory board, and ultimately, that will need to come to the board for approval um as a part of what you do um as well. Um, we're also planning for the implementation of the WellNet software. So this is in a a tool that allows PE teachers to track all this data in a way that is not nearly as manual. Literally, I have a Google spreadsheet that everybody is putting their data into, but it will also allow us to track not only by grade and gender, but also other demographics and what kind of different experiences students might be having. How can we connect their physical fitness potentially with their other academic performance and and those sorts of things? So it'll be really good for for teachers. As we continue forward, um I hope that the board um will continue to set the tone that physical education is extremely important for our students. Um, and it's important that that's that tone be set, not only with students, but also with parents and other adults in the schools. Um, and because of that, we need to really make sure that we're protecting PE time at all levels. Uh, that has to be a core part of the broad experiences of our students. Um, and then ultimately, I would say it would be wonderful if we can continue to invest in professional development uh for our teachers uh for those physical education teachers. And I'll just give my last slide there. Um, you might be saying, you know, hey, is this really what we already focusing on, right? Uh, we you know, reading and math is really important, and absolutely one hundred percent is. Uh, but I would just wanna take you back to the founding of what public education is in in America, and it is uh from Benjamin Franklin. The first uh public school system was in Pennsylvania. He said that there should we should place both an emphasis on physical as well as intellectual fitness because ed- exercise invigorates the soul and the body. And and that's been a part of public education for a long time, and I hope that that will continue in Lynchburg City Schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Wodka.
Questions?
Questions for Dr. Wodka, Dr. Day?
Could we go back to slide number twelve? Twelve, yes. So it looks like there's still a problem at the middle school level for aerobic strength. Um, and it actually went down. It's the one place where we had a decrease.
Yes.
Did does anybody have any insight into what's going on there?
I I think that that is a um, I I believe that's a student engagement issue more than anything. Um, I think that we've gotta figure out, um and and this is interesting that it's in middle school because of just maybe some interest at that level, maturity at that level.
Yeah.
Making sure that students understand it's important. Um, and I I think that's probably, it's probably more that than it is overall physical fitness in that particular category. Um, but I, yeah, that was also very frustrating to me. I was yeah, well, everywhere else we're very good.
Mr. Laurie.
And do you think it's more or less the seventh, eighth graders? Cause sixth graders just came out of elementary, and they're usually active.
Yeah, I think I think that's, I think that particular time in life uh is the case. But I will say, there's no reason that Lynchburg kids ought to be any different than any other kids in seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah.
So we gotta, we gotta make some changes there. And I I'm, you know, that that's one of those things that those teachers need to sit down and say, hey, what what can we do differently to make sure there's engagement there?
Mr. Connor.
Um, I understand that as you're transitioning to new leadership, you're leaving, and it's gonna be taken over by sort of a committee. Is there any way we can try to integrate so that we can find somebody? Cause usually when something doesn't have a leader, it doesn't have the impact that somebody that pushes it. Okay, I see. She's ready to answer that.
I just, go ahead. Also, I do understand that, so there is a a position posted to be the coordinator for health PE, the arts, and extracurriculars, I think. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So it will not be a committee.
Okay.
Yeah, so the but I but to your point, I think the success here is about bringing those teachers to the table, letting letting them make the instructional decisions because they're the closest to the students. I think that's really important. But I do think, to your point, I think it's really important for somebody in central office to have their eye on it, to be a part of that, to help kind of coordinate the the organization of instruction there, and so.
Then one more half question. One of the things that has concerned me in the past is, at the elementary level, sometimes when kids misbehave, the punishment is to take away recess.
Yeah.
And I know as a cow, if I was a child in today's day, I probably would have been labeled with some letters because of my activities. I think um we shouldn't do that. First of all, we need them to be active. Um, that's my the small things. I don't know instructurally, but I think we should find other ways to help correct their behavior and not take away recess. And um and also at the elementary level, try to help the teachers create scenarios where we engage them in specific things during recess to to help with their physical fitness.
Yeah.
Oh, and last question. Also, it's been shown in that and other schools that kids should have a little more recess, but we haven't increased it. Is there a reason why we can't increase it?
I think it's a, I you know, I I can't speak to that other than other than to say, like, I know it's a it's a time and everything else.
Yeah, the time, yeah.
I think.
It's a balance, and it would be wonderful if we could increase, but, you know, we also lunches are important. Um, and sometimes we, you know, think if we need a little bit more instructional time, well, we'll just make lunch a little bit shorter. But students need that time to get through the line, to eat, to be healthy. Um, and we all know that we really need to work on literacy and math and other instruction. And so if we take away from five minutes from a literacy block or ten minutes from a math block to increase recess, um then that takes away the time from other really important instruction. So it's it's a it's a struggle because of limited number of hours in a day.
Yeah, because like I know from activity, especially I've been a pastor ropes instructor myself. The more they get out, the more the blood flows, the better they think, the better they do.
So do do you wanna talk a little bit about the elementary pilot of the grant with the movement?
We did. So we 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 actually were able to go out. We got an uh this grant called the Active Learning Grant. So we worked with pre-ked two teachers in a couple of schools uh to try to incorporate movement into daily classroom instruction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'll say this, I I um, the way we rolled that out into a couple, into some of the training probably wasn't great enough on me, right, the way it be frankly. Um, and so um it was very successful at a couple of places, maybe not so much of those, and that's that's a that's a that's a design issue, right? Um, so I think that 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 continues to be a part of that. I know that um lots of kindergarten and first-grade teachers and pre-k teachers already include uh movement in what they're doing.
I was gonna say.
But the idea was to say, let's do it in a way that is uh incorporated not only to uh what's just being done, but also how how does that connect to standards? So that there's great communication between the PE teacher and the 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 classroom teacher, right? We didn't do a great job of communicating that part of it uh to to some of those teachers, and so that but I do think that's another really great tool.
I was gonna say, we did that at least ten years ago, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we would stand up and do twisting and jumping jacks, and then we sit back down and get back to work. So, yeah, alright.
You said, just a quick question. Is there a particular reason why the the assessment is done on a different schedule with the high schools?
Yes, ma'am. So um at Glass, they do PE on a s- a semester schedule. So one semester you do PE, one semester you do health. At Heritage, it's more of a quarter system, so they they go back and forth. Um, that is another thing that I think should, we should reflect on what the right way to do that is. Um, I I think there's probably pros and cons. I think that you probably do need at some point to think about how you like, how you make sure you have physical movement um at the school that is, uh you know, in their health time. You know, if you're if you're in health time for a semester, you may not be getting any movement for a semester, right? And that's troubling, but there's also reasons to do that. So that's it's that I think that's a legacy thing, just how PE instruction has been done for a long time. Um, but I think that should, somebody should take a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ward. Next one is informational items. Next school board meeting on Tuesday, July first at five P M here in school admin building. Next school work work session, July fifteenth at five P M here in school admin building. Next one is special presentation, special recognition. Mrs. Day.
Yes. Um, this is an exciting time, but we have a couple of our administrators and a couple of our board members who will be leading us are there tonight. So these are the two here.
And Mrs. Pugh.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you have done for Lynchburg City Schools. We appreciate.
Thank you so much.
Everything, right? Come on, let's take a picture. He's taking, you taking a picture from there, or? No, he's not. Okay. Thank you. That's what Mrs. Pugh.
Awesome.
Alright.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Break it open, man.
Change your mind, huh?
No, thank you.
And also, we have, do we have our board members who will no longer be with us this year, or well, for the rest of the year? Um, and we have Mr. Dr. Mark Tinsley in the Lynchburg City School Board. Dr. Mark Tinsley for one year of services to the Lynchburg City School Board. Lynchburg City School commends you for your dedication, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And we just want to say thank you for your services, along with Mr. Andrews, same certificate for three years of services, and Dr. Day, Martin Day, for his three years of services as well within Lynchburg City Schools.
Graduation, man. We made it.
We made it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I'll hook you up.
Don't appreciate no flowers.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Tina.
This is Dr. Duke. Thank you, sir. Any comments for uh?
Skip the brooches when it comes to recognition. Mrs. Laurie?
Yes, I wanna thank Mrs. Pugh for all your help with academics as committee. The two years I was have been on it, and you brought some really good information for us, and you guys are great at answering questions and prepping and and behind the scenes, you know, even question answering. So thank you. I I learned a lot. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. And um, Dr. Day, I've learned a lot from you, especially about the Robert's Rules. You're great, so. And some of the conferences we've been to, they've been wonderful, so. And it was good to see Mr. Andrews again, and after teaching his child as well, and so, yeah, our interactions. And and Mr. Tinsley also, thank you so much for everything and for your service. So, yeah, right, great. You did a great job with the superintendent search, so thank you for leading that.
Mrs. Preston.
Um, I'd like to thank all of you. I think that people don't realize the amount of effort, energy, time that you spend doing all of the things that you do, but you're doing it for all the right reasons. You're helping our kids. There's no no better thing that you could be doing than that. So thank all of you for what you have done, and I'm sure we'll continue to do.
Mr. Connor.
Um, I'd like to thank um Dr. Pugh, first of all, for your leading us in academics, and I already see the improvements. I can't wait to see the I believe we're gonna show a significant increase in SOL scores this year. Um, I wanna thank Dr. Wodka. My short time on the finance committee, the information you provided helped us make some real strong, hard decisions, and I appreciate the hard work you put in. And I think some of the things that we had on the burner, we will be bringing forward to forward, you know, when the new um leadership is in place. And I wanna thank the, I want Miss Dr. Day. I'm concerned cause nobody is gonna be as detail-oriented as you to help us not just navigate through um the Robert's Rules, but um in putting together his research, the research that you put together for what we need to look at for the discipline committee and some of those things. You are gonna be sorely, sorely missed. And then Dr. Tinsley and and uh Mr. Andrew, I love working with you guys. It's been great.
Mr. Andrews, Dr. Day, and Dr. Tinsley.
Uh, man, um, three years, applied for the school board. I did not get here alone. It was a It was a a whole host of people, community members, that uh interviewed me, that um challenged me. Uh the clerk of council supported my decision, uh Dr. Coleman, Dr. Brennan. Um there was a diff- various council members that that took me out to lunch and and counseled me and talked to me, talked about just the community as a whole, talked about politics, talked about preservation of public education, how important that was. And um I could not be in the seat without community, period. Um and then, of course, I want to thank all of you guys for the civility, the friendships, the conversations. Um I felt like we've made some really good waves in public education. It hasn't always been easy. And of course, we didn't always agree on every tip every topic, but we definitely made sure that we walked away from this horseshoe um in a good manner. Nobody disrespected each other. Everybody seemed to still be have some type of um some type of decorum, right? And so I will forever take that with me and I appreciate everything you guys have done for me.
Thank you.
Well, it has been a lot of work. And um I know I can be obsessive about roles sometimes. That's just the way I am. But I've learned a tremendous amount. And for any of the new upcoming school board members who might be listening, fasten your seat belts. Uh there's a lot to learn. And I wouldn't have made it without a number of people who helped me along the way. Uh Bob Brennan, in particular, when I first joined the board, he 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 met with me and and helped me get on my feet. Um all the past board members, um Kim Sen Ha and I shared rides to and from the uh board meetings. And we had a lot of conversations in the car and she was always available to answer questions about how did we handle things in the past? And in particular, her comments about various personalities on the board, that was interesting sometimes. But um I owe a a lot to all my school board colleagues, past and present. Um we we all bring something different to the table and we learn from each other. And and sometimes it's hard to figure out how do we function as a corporate body when everybody's got a little bit different take on things? And that's where Robert's rules comes in. That's why I put a lot of emphasis on that because I think that's how we do it. Um it provides a framework for that. But I do apologize if I'm a bit obsessive about that, but I'm again, I'm trying to help us function as well as we can. Um so thank you all for uh doing this with me.
Thank you. Dr. Tinsley?
Uh yeah, just thank the community, thank this council, thank you all for giving me a shot at this. Um sometimes you have to make hard decisions in life. I had to look at priorities and decide that uh that one year was all I could give to the school board. It's unfortunate. Wish I could do more. I've loved the the year that I've had here and I appreciate the friendship, the collegiality and the camaraderie that we've had. And uh and I think we've done some good things together. So thank you.
Mrs. Pew?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you uh for all of your support to the school board. Um I know at times you've challenged us, but that's your job. Um that's the role that you need to play. Um it helps us as educators reflect on the things that we're doing and really look at are the are the programs and and things that we have in place, is that what's best for students? Um and you're right, we are all here for for students. That that's why we're here. So I it's been an honor to work in LCS to um. I never thought that I would end up in in this space um because I went all through Lynchburg City Schools. I started teaching here and I never thought that I would end my career here. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Well, I want to want to thank everyone here and thank um all of the staff that we've had the wonderful opportunity to work with. There are so many tremendously dedicated people who work for Lynchburg City Schools, um all of you among them. Um and this community cares very deeply about its uh its students. So like Dr. uh Mrs. Pew, uh uh first of all, I want to say Amy and I have had the best.
We have.
Partnership, working relationship over the last few years.
Yeah.
Even before when I was in the city, we just we just had a blast working together. I've learned such a tremendous amount from her and 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 others here, but uh you know, really want to thank you as well. But like Amy, um I came through Lynchburg City Schools um and I feel like um Lynchburg City Schools got me my start just in life, right? Um but I also had the really great opportunity to come to education as a result of Lynchburg City Schools. It's gotten me my start now in in education and I have a great opportunity going forward. Uh but I love LCS. I love um the people here. It is this has been my favorite job I've ever had uh because it's just it's such a wonderful community. Um and I I just really appreciate the time and the opportunity uh to be here and to to hopefully contribute a little bit, uh but I've learned a tremendous amount. Um and and I just really am am full of gratitude. So thank you.
Like I'm the last one, but I'll be not the least one. I'll start with uh Dr. Waterka. I have known his family for years. If you know Lynchburg, how Lynchburg works. Dad was my doctor and his uh mother was my daughter's pharmacist. So I've known the family for a long time and he's a good guy, a a good-hearted man. Every time I see him seven thirty on Ward's Ferry Road and I'm coming out of the home to go to work, I said, forgive me. I said, what the heck? What happened? Everything okay? He said, yes, I'm going to Heritage High School. That's his work ethic. He's a hard worker and we'll miss you. Uh you are a kind-hearted soul and a very hard worker. You have given yourself hundred percent to the school district. Um for thank you for all you have done for our kids. Every time there's an event, I see your uh blue uh whatever that SUV shows up. Uh Dr. Tinsley, you and I have become very close over the last uh three year, two, no, you have been here one year. I thought three years. I thought we've been three years. We've become good friends. Uh and uh you'll be missed by me. You know, you're on my speed dial many times I call you and uh uh I don't know what day I call him Colonel. The other day I call him Doctor. The other day I call him Mark. So but hope you will stay in touch.
Yes.
Uh you know, I will not delete your personal cell phone number from my phone and I'll still be calling you.
Alright.
And uh Mrs. Pew, uh you know, you are a legend.
Thank you.
Because every time you look for a solid academic advice, I can see everybody is turning over to you. Whether it comes to assessments, you know, all those things, you've been able to manage the academic success committee very well under difficult circumstances. You know, I'm looking at Mrs. Lowry. She knows exactly what I'm talking about. You two manage that, you with her very well. So thank you for all you have done.
Thank you.
And you'll be missed. You have worked, as you said, throughout the system from IT to everywhere else. And so you know this district very well. And hopefully, the new generations, Dr. Davis is standing right there, can lean on you for advice in future. I always say, never burn the bridge you walk on. So you always look back to other people who have made this place better place uh to look back on them. So thank you for everything you have done for LCS. Now turn to my best friend, Dr. Day. He calls at home his wife that I'm his work wife.
You're the other man in my life.
I call him so often. And sometimes after the board meeting, you know, things are not easy all the time. They're difficult. So you want somebody to run by things and he has been a very good advice all the time. He's I call him, he's my linear guy. He knows the the line is flowing, always knows the policies, always knows the procedures and see where we deviated. And things when I don't do right, he just comes and tells me, no, this is not the right thing to do. So he brings me back, right? So we have had conversations where we disagree, but that's perfectly fine. Disagreement is part of friendship and I I'll value your friendship and I'll be leaning on you more and more.
And I'll change my phone number.
He has two phone numbers. One is personal, the one he keeps for the school board, actually. Uh but uh he's driving to his daughter in uh Cleveland. We talk, you know, we 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 talk so much uh that it has become a routine and for me, that'll be a difficult change. Uh uh and then um you'll be missed. Uh he he you have achieved a sort of a legacy in policies, right? Everything in the policy knows every detail that uh if the policy. So hopefully, we can lean back on you and on those difficult issues and you'll be missed on this board.
Thank you.
And Mr. Andrews, Brother Andrews?
Seventeen fifty.
Yeah, he he's a great guy. You know, you you have a very gentle, so it's 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 a difficult job and you do a wonderful balance uh between looking at all sides. Uh sometimes I've been skewed to one side, but you keep that uh very delicate balance without being affected by the drama on either side. And for thank you for doing that and you'll be missed. Uh your common sense will be missed. Uh that's why you are the common sense guy. You know, you look at both sides and say, okay, this doesn't make sense. This doesn't make sense. So but we appreciate everything you have done and I think this community appreciates.
Thank you.
Uh he's the guy. At one time I was uh having a cardiac problem. Uh he knows it. I call nine one one. I should, that's not HIPAA violation, right?
No, no.
He's the one who showed up, took me to ER and I wasn't taken right inside and done the procedure. So he was the first paramedic at my home at that time. I didn't knew who this guy was. But now later on, when I found out, I say, man, you saved my life. So but.
Just dropped him in the gutter.
So God knows how many lives he saves. That's why I said this community appreciates everything you do day in, day out, in the middle of the night. My call was in the middle of the night.
Yes, sir.
So uh these guys, they're awake all night, taking those nine one one emergency calls. And when they show up on Watch Ferry, you take about two, two, less than two minutes to show up. And especially when it's an emergency call, you guys are less than a minute, you just show up. So it's a lot of uh things you do besides school board, which this community appreciates. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you have done for the school board as well as the community.
Yes.
So other than that, anything for the good of the order and Mrs. Day, uh thank you for all you have done this year, ma'am.
Yes.
And you're the. On the back end, we have working Austin and his team, Mr. Eagle. Uh thank you for all you have done. Mr. DePaul, I missed you, sir. You have a comment to make. I missed him, right? He's gone.
Must be gone.
I think I missed Mr. DePaul.
Oh, it says he's left the meeting, it says.
Oh.
I apologize. I I I just forgot to look at my back.
And Miss James.
But Mr. DePaul has his uh.
And Miss James is.
Uh Miss Jameson, uh she's always making sure that things are in order. And Shepard is sitting in the back. Dr. Davis is there. I can count on and on everybody. But uh the the this is a collective effort. To run the school district is not easy. Dr. Copeland is not here today, but he still took my call today. So that's the, you know, there's uh somebody was joking with me about vacation. There's no vacation. And today where he is, uh he can only use a satellite phone, but he still picked up the phone. Uh because that's the dedication of personnel, I call it personnel at LCS. We don't see it on the front end, but the back end I see it day in, day out. You see what I'm saying? So hopefully, uh the change in the the top level personnel, the things will continue going forward and we'll be doing what needed to be done to provide a quality learning environment for these young men and women. That's the bottom line.
Yes.
No drama. We are here to provide a quality learning environment. That's our goal. That's the sole goal, right, Brother Andrews? And one good thing I forgot to mention, he's been fighting for last five years for seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty?
Yes, sir. So we achieved it this year, literally seventeen dollars, fifteen thousand. That's his uh legacy that you were able to achieve that seventeen fifty.
Yeah, seventeen fifty T-shirt.
I thought you were mentioning that alcohol bottles. I said, you said seventeen fifty. I said, oh, that's seventeen fifty, yes, sir, yeah. So seventeen fifty is is your legacy in the school district, cause you have been very vocal and fighting. I still remember from that Heritage High School uh board meeting and you and I were sitting together saying, how should we scramble to get that seventeen fifty? And finally, uh God has his, you know, eyes on you and say, we gotta make it happen this year and it did happen. So thank you. And after said, anything else for the good of the order? The meeting is adjourned.